Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we get started, everybody, very early in the roll. It's uh six ten. I'd like to call the December twelfth, twenty twenty two planning commission meeting order six ten PM. And Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you could uh just verify that you've got all communications before you go forward.
I'm sorry, verify what?
Verify you have full two-way communication. You can hear everybody?
Yes, I can, and
Just want to make sure.
As long as you can hear me and Bob and okay, then I never get.
First quarter business with the flag salute. I'm gonna have my right to. Right. He just flag salute, sir. And it's to our. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you would do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Here.
Commissioner Santos? If you're here, let us know. I'm not sure who MR is on the Zoom call, but MR is asking if we can hear him or her. I cannot. You would have to unmute yourself? Or I can unmute you? Actually, I have to ask you to unmute. Well, we'll get back to that unless you're a commissioner. All right, so pardon me for that. I thought perhaps that was Commissioner Santos for some reason. So we're noting the absence this evening of Commissioner Santos. Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Grab?
Here.
And Chair Camerata?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number two, oral communications. Persons wishing to address the planning commission on subjects other than those that are scheduled or requested. They do so at this time. In order to conduct a finally meeting, a five-minute time limit per person has been established for government code five four nine five four point two. And the question is if the uh Madam Deputy City Clerk has any comments or parts or anything that's not on tonight's agenda?
If if anyone on the Zoom call has any comments on items not on this agenda or on consent agenda, you may speak now. You will have to unmute yourself, though.
Hi, this is Miriam. Are you guys discussing the smog shop project on eighteen hundred Lomita Boulevard on this meeting?
Yeah, yes, we will be doing that in just a few minutes. So if you hang in there, we'll get to that in just a couple of minutes.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. By the way, Miriam?
Yes.
Are you on ones or is that also an MR? Is that yours as well?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so why don't we go to item three, which is the consent agenda? Uh, we have item three A, which is the approval of the October tenth, twenty twenty two minutes. And we'd like to ask that there's a motion to approve the October tenth, twenty twenty two minutes. So move. There is a motion. I have a second. Oh, I think. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Who made the motion, please? I missed that.
Uh, Mike Grab may be a motion. That's Vice Chair Grab.
Thank you, and Brenda seconded it.
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos is absent this evening. Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Grab?
Yes.
Chair Camerata?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. That's um five zero with one absent.
Okay, and I also, before we move forward, I would like to welcome back to our city, uh, city attorney David King, who is here, probably not visible for some reason unless he raises a hand, which I don't know on the screen you can see. So welcome back, David. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving on, public hearings, item number four, this is the conditional use permit number three twenty-two. The request to allow a smog shop to operate in an existing one thousand square foot service bay at eighteen hundred Lomita Boulevard in the MC zone, which is the light manufacturing commercial zone. The applicant is a Klaus Wolke, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Um, the presentation will be done by Assistant Planner Laura McMoRan. And Laura, if you would be kind enough to start off with your presentation.
Great, thank you so much, Chair Camerata. Deputy City Clerk, would you go to the next slide? So, as mentioned, this is a case that came to us because I got a zone clearance for a smog shop, and it was somewhat of an unfortunate matter of timing, although one had previously existed. There was no authorization under our code as just a auto repair facility for this use, no conditional use permit entitlement. It is a former fueling service station that has no longer operated as such, but then the bay was a continuous operation as a smog shop for many, many years. But during the pandemic, we had a new owner come through for the smog shop. He put in his own clearance, but never pulled a business license and never opened. So there was a many, many, many months, more than what is allowed by code, um that is used afterment. And therefore, when the new applicant came forward, I could not clear it for a zone for its business license without an entitlement. Okay, next slide, please, Linda. So the general plan design makes this area is industrial manufacturing, and the zoning is classified as light manufacturing and commercial. Uh, you know, again, the category this fits in is like a subset of auto repair. We have a service bay there. It was once a fueling service station, as mentioned. In nineteen eighty, the most recent site plan was had three freestanding buildings, three driveways, and seven parking stalls. Next slide, please. So this is site plan number three seventy-eight. You can see this is the most recent site plan we have on file. And um it shows pretty much the site as is. There have been some other changes, minor changes that I can note with. They come with permits. The canopy that is now over, instead of what's the gas island, is vacuum pumps. Those tanks have been removed from the site in nineteen ninety-four. And there is a garage that was built with permits in the back of the property. Next slide, please. So these are existing pictures of the site. You can see it has the three-point operated point. Car wash bays on the westerly side of the building. And then in the middle is like a utility room, and then on the easterly side is the one service bay. Next slide, please, Linda. So the reason this is in any math is here is really to demonstrate what the orientation of this bay is. There is a somewhat sensitive use behind it, which is the residential Kiwanis Gardens. But with the bay being orientated towards Lomita Boulevard and actually, you know, a smog shop is not a really big noise generating type of use the way maybe an auto repair facility is a full-scale one. We don't see this being and this to use being an issue for the surrounding community. Next slide, please. So the findings that we have made is the use is allowed with the CUP as long as it's enclosed on three sides. The that is a requirement in the code that there can be an auto repair facility, in this case, more limited just to a smog shop for the reasons mentioned in the staff report, which I just don't have the capacity to store vehicles. Right, which is typical when you have auto auto repair waiting for parts and such, so we don't have that. Um, the project is consistent with the general plan, the land use designation. It's suitable. Uh, this smog shop will occupy an existing service bay. The orientation is towards Lomita. We don't see really it generating any problem for the surrounding commercial uses or neighboring residential use to the south. The site is designed as fundamentally consistent with site plan number three seventy-eight. And we've added conditions sixteen and seventeen, and they align with the approved site plan. I'm going to get to those. So again, the site plan is pretty much the same, except we're just modifying the parking ever so slightly and a driveway apron. And then number five is clearly Lomita Boulevard can adequately carry the kind of traffic that a one-base smog shop is going to generate. It's a main arterial street connecting with the west. We say no issue with traffic on coming from this use. Can you go to the next slide, please? So here are the specific conditions to this project. The first, looking at the original, or not original site plan, the latest site plan is that northwest parking stall is in a is not there presently. It's in a very poor location for two reasons. First, you never have a parking stall along a sidewalk because of door swing. You don't want it to be someone to be swinging it out and another person coming by. And the second clearly is it's far too close to the driveway aisle. Backing out, you could have a car pulling in, and there's a point of contact there that's not protected. The other two conditions that we've added are kind of based on the site's use and condition. They have augmented their parking by striking some spaces near the corner and that overlaps with the easterly driveway apron. It's a smaller driveway. They have, you know, on the westerly side on Lomita, that thirty-eight-foot path good for two vehicles, very ample, and the same on Ebony. But this driveway again, it's it's not in the best location because there's a right turn lane there. Second, they can use it for parking, and they have other options for circulation that are suitable. So we put that two conditions in there regarding and creating a barrier to be determined. We designed if this, you know, project is approved at that driveway and then adding some additional parking spaces based on the need. Next slide, please. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning condition adopts resolution approving conditional use permit number three twenty-two with the conditions that allows for a smog shop and finds if the project is categorically zoned from CECL. Um, are there any questions for staff?
Uh, well, first of all, thank you, Laura, for that. And if you have any questions from anybody, Monica, no, I don't know. Uh, no. Brenda, anything?
I don't know. I'll wait and talk to you.
Uh, Bob, any questions?
No, no, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, with that being said, we will now ask the applicant if they would approach the podium if they'd like to make their presentation. So if you would like to do that, state your name and for the record, please.
My name is Klaus Wolke.
Okay.
Just, you want to describe what you?
And yeah, if you have any quick comments or do you have any quick additions to what Laura said?
Yeah, so like we said earlier, just the smog has been there for over twenty years. Unfortunately, during COVID, it got taken away, and we have applied the conditional use permit. Everything stands as is. Nothing has been changed. The only thing we're asking is that we're allowed to reopen a business that was probably previously there.
Okay. Okay, very good. Anything else? If not, thank you very much. Uh, I will now open up the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, did you receive any written communications on this item?
I did not receive anything in writing. I'm just not sure if anyone on the call here uh, would like to speak. Miriam, wish to speak earlier?
Miriam, please do that, too.
Hi, this is Miriam. We are uh, with the owners of Lomita Plaza, which is the plaza next door to this space. Um, we have some reservations. We had actually contacted the city regarding some code issues that we believe were happening. I don't know that the city never contacted me back to tell me the result of the the code enforcement and if there were any violations. But I feel like before this project gets approved, I think we need to clear up a couple of items. One is the back area where the alley is. Uh, we should, we should, that alley is, I think, owned by Lomita Plaza. We have our our parking spots over there in the alleyway, which is right behind the space in front of the Kiwanis Garden, like in front of that retaining wall. This, you see, I think it's noted by an easement on your map over there. Uh, they have an easement, but the problem is that's that was that area was never supposed to be gated off. They basically gated. They placed their gate on the easement, basically. So we, you know, our cars and things and and it's it's hard to pass by if there are like a car is parked over there, another car is hard to pass because they have placed like a a gate, like almost like a chain link fence over there. And this gate was never there. It's been there for many years, but I don't know how it got to that, and the gate, I feel like it just keeps pushing. It's pushing into our property. There's there's oil changes happening there. There's oil that we have um, on camera that they, you know, have oil. They're bringing the oil barrels on our property there. We've seen dumping, so this is kind of a an issue with us because we don't know what's going on over there. They have like tarps over there. It's really filthy, disgusting. I have no idea what's going on over there. And we've kind of tried to talk to the owner before. They won't even talk to us. So it's 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 an issue, and I don't know if you guys got a chance to come over there to take a look at it. Um, the second thing is they're digging something over there. I don't know if they're moving the fence or what, you know, they're they're digging like a hole in there, and that's another uh, time that we called about that code enforcement to see what what are they digging over there? What? They were digging something in the asphalt on that property, and I wanted to see what was that for? Is that something that was approved for to get a permit or what was that for? The third thing is um, they've gone ahead and painted our wall, um, which is right behind this parking space, I believe, that you guys are talking about. They've painted our wall with their you know, I don't know name of the car. I forget what it is, without our permission or anything like that. And, you know, I feel like all of these things are kind of infringing on our space and on our property, and I don't know if you guys are aware of it, and I want you to please resolve these issues and maybe table this and come back to it at a later point when all of these issues are fixed. Um, these are some of our reservations, and also they 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 have, I'm just, let me just go down my list here. And they also put their cameras on our building wall without our permission, so they made holes or whatever they did. They placed cameras on our building without our permission. Dumping the oil on our property, putting the oil barrels on our property. They park their employee park, employees park their cars in our alleys parking, and those are for our clients parking. So this is this parking is already an issue. They're going to get rid of that parking spot. Guess what's going to happen to our parking? They're going to start parking more cars in those areas. Those cars, those parking areas should are reserved for our customers coming to the plaza and not for their employees. They've posted banners on that wall also without our approval and permission. So if they're going to have a smog shop, I'm just going to assume that they're just going to put whatever flags or wherever they want. I don't think this this should really move forward right now because there are all of these issues that first need to be cleared by us. I'm not happy about any of these procedures. And also, I don't know if the city, you know, we've we've been owners of this property since two thousand and five. We've tried to make the place beautiful. We've tried to keep it clean. Anytime there's graffiti, we clean it up, like we we try and get rid of, you know, any transients that are coming in and trying to stay there. On the other hand, I, uh, there's this car wash. I don't know what they're doing in there. It's not just a car wash, so I don't know what's permitted. I know it was a I don't know what it was before, but I don't know what it is permitted. I didn't know that they were doing oil changes on the property. Is that something?
Thank you. Thank you. That's five minutes.
Um, Miriam, thank you very much. I think we're going to probably have just a couple of quick questions for you.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to yield to the commissioners. So first, we're going to start with Commissioner Grab. Vice Chair Grab, if you have any questions for Miriam, very clearly. Yes, I do. Have you uh submitted these items to the city with regard with regard to the quote, what you perceive to be code enforcement issues? Have those been formally submitted to the city?
I've called the city. Every time I call, they transfer me to code enforcement, and I leave a message. And they've never, I left my phone number. They never get back to me, and they said, and I even called back. And I'm like, are they checking their voice message? Are they going to get back to me? Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna call you when they go there. They never called. So I don't know. Is there another way that I have to do it? I have to submit it in writing? I don't know. I just thought that I could call the city. They said, leave a message, leave the address, leave your name, leave your phone number, whatever the issue is, and we're going to send code enforcement. They never get back to me. I I don't know if it was ever done by them. So yes, I've called the city, but I haven't gotten a response.
When was the last time that you called and left a message?
Probably when they were digging that hole. That was maybe two weeks ago, something like that, two and two and a half weeks ago.
Did you call and left an message?
Yeah, so I called the city and I said, can I talk to code enforcement? And then they sent me to a voicemail. It's it's most of the time it's gone to a voicemail, and I leave a message. And then they say, we'll get back to you. Put put the name of the property in it, you know, all that, and I say it.
You said most of the time you get a voice message.
Yeah, I mean, over the years, I'm sure I've I've talked to people. And you know, we we love the city, like we trust in, you know, what what you guys are doing. And, you know, we don't ever question it. So we're as good neighbors, we're just trying to make sure things are being done legally. I'm not here to go and nitpick and, you know, but these are the things that, you know, I I feel like the city needs to know because you know, I'm thinking, okay, I'm doing my part in doing it, you know, I don't want to cause trouble. I don't want to, you know, I just want to make sure that things are being done correctly and fairly.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
I'm going to, okay, okay. Uh, hold down the rest of the commissioners. Monica, do you have any questions?
Not at this.
Okay, Brenda, any questions?
Not at this.
Okay, Bob, do you have any questions?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, I do have one quick question for you, Miriam. You referred to somebody digging a hole. Where are they digging a hole? In the alley or on the property? Have you seen them answer?
I don't know exactly. I think it's close to the alley, but I'm hearing them going, you know, like it's it's digging in the asphalt.
Okay.
So I don't know exactly if they're pushing the gate back. I don't know. I can't let go over there. It's tarped. I mean, I don't want to like go on their property. But that, yeah, that's that's troubling for me, so I I don't want I don't want to move forward with something when all of these other things are going on and, you know, we're trying to hoping that you guys are working on it, but I'm I'm sad that you guys don't know about it, so.
I appreciate you letting us know. It's the first that the commission is hearing it. But we will let the planning department and the code enforcement people respond to you, and at this point, what I would like to do is ask if you can put your concerns in writing, and maybe you can email it, or you can get it over to the 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 city planning department and the code enforcement officer, so there's a paper trail.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I knew that with COVID, you guys were down and it was hard and, you know, it was but I can, yeah, I can email it. Who do I email it to?
Oh, what I would like to do is actually, unless you have anything else, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to bring it back to the staff right here, and I'm going to let Laura make a couple of comments to you right now, okay?
Okay. If you can, yeah, let me know also the email, or if you can put it in the chat, that would be great.
If you can just hold on a second. She's going to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
The city has a on its website that accepts comments or cases from the public for code enforcement. And and either you can, if you can navigate through our website and buy online, or if you can't, you can certainly email me directly, and I'll navigate you to the proper place to fill in the online form that will go to code enforcement. And that's true for any code enforcement request from the public. It goes through the portal. And that way, then the officer can respond to you directly.
Okay. Okay, I'll 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 do that. I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, and Miriam, Miriam, one last thing. If you can't do that, for some reason, that's a a challenge, you can just call the city and ask for Assistant Planner Laura McMoRan directly, okay? And then you can talk to her, and she can walk you through what steps you need to make to actually file your concerns in writing, so that it can be addressed by the code enforcement officer.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. I'll just start putting things in writing. So should I just list all of these concerns then, just like bullet?
Yeah, just like you just did now, bullet by bullet, list them, and then they can address them one by one, and they can deal with it directly because uh, that's what code enforcement is supposed to do. So I appreciate you bringing it to our concern, to our attention. And we will continue this hearing, and we will do our diligence to wait for the city code enforcement officer to come back with a response on these items.
Okay.
Okay. I would recognize Assistant Attorney David King. Go ahead. I'm the chair, which you might want to do results with the applicants here. You might want to have give them a response. Right, and I was about to do that because I came down to do the thing, so I'm good. So thank you for that. So Miriam, for the time being, that's where we are. I'm going to also let the applicant who just spoke a minute ago respond to these concerns, and I'm going to bring them back up to the podium for just a couple of minutes. And uh you will hear from the applicant Klaus Wolke right now.
Hi, Miriam. My name is Klaus. I own a car wash next to your lot. Um, drilling in the back.
Uh, what I would recommend is you rec, oh, just address the direct, sure, I can toss the chickens down here. They're the ones that make the decisions.
So for any drilling or anything you might hear, there was a fence that was kind of falling over.
Okay.
So someone came out to realign it, but there was no drilling on the side of there on the out. It was on the inside, and we attached larger poles to pull the fence in. So all the drilling was on our property towards us. So it's stopping that fence from kind of leaning over. It's now loose.
Okay.
Um, sorry, I don't remember all of the.
Uh, the other one was the Uh, the other one was the, uh, alley owned by the plaza and blocking it with, uh, either your employees or somebody's employees from the.
The eighteen hundred, correct. Uh, yeah, so before we, we weren't sure who, if it was an easement, cause our list or our map that showed easements.
Mm-hmm.
So we thought it was our property or their property. So one of the employees asked if they could park and I was like, I think it should be fine. They did park there and then someone from the plaza came over and told them not to and then we stopped.
So that'll take care of that issue. The other one was them dumping oil, they're doing oil changes.
There is no oil changes or anything.
Right, okay. Again, code enforcement can check that out. The other one was, uh, they, she claimed that you painted the wall that belongs to their property with some kind of a sign or banner.
Correct, yeah. So when we took over the property, the wall was painted. So we repainted it, it was all worn off and.
So just paint no, no names or?
It was painted, there's a banner on it.
Okay, so.
Take down some of them.
The other one was cameras being placed on their wall as well.
There was a camera on one of the walls we can take down as well.
Okay, so that can be addressed. And then, um, the issue with the gate, that's a lot, that sometimes I guess blocks the.
Uh, I, again, our gate is, uh, you can see where their asphalt comes up to our property and our gate is.
So it's something that can be addressed.
Yeah.
Okay. So Miriam, uh, well, okay, so thank you very much. I think that addresses all the six items that I believe we had, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. So thank you very much, Klaus. Uh, so.
But the, on the easement, the, if you look on that map, if you wanna pull up that map on your, um, screen, pull up that map that you had.
Uh, okay, yeah, we all have it, yeah, we all have it on the screen right now.
Okay, so you see that part where it says easement?
Right.
That area should never have been blocked off by a gate. There's a gate there. Unless something was approved, then I didn't know about it. I thought that was the easement that it's like, almost like a walkthrough.
Okay.
So that, that whole area is blocked and there's cars, there's tarp, there's a chain link fence. That's kind of where the drilling was happening. So I thought that an easement means it's not a hundred percent their property. It's shared property and they're, like, it has to be accessed. Right now, there's no access from the alley.
Right, so Miriam, when you write these items and you send it to Laura, I would suggest you do two things. You can write and then call her tomorrow and let her address those with you directly, okay? Because then she can explain what she knows and then she can make sure the code enforcement gets the list and then they can start looking at these items.
Okay, so that parking spot that's in the corner, is that getting moved to that area?
Call, call Laura directly. Nothing's happening right now. There has been no approvals for this, uh, request at this time. So I would suggest you call Laura tomorrow. She can run you through everything that you talked about tonight and talk about a few other things that are conditions of approval. But as I said, the request has not been approved for the CUP number three twenty-two as of yet.
Okay.
Okay, so nothing will happen, nothing will happen until gets a chance to review the concerns and code enforcement checks everything out as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna now close the public hearing and if there's, uh, no more questions or discussion from any beyond the commission. Um, but I do wanna go run through any more questions, Commissioner Graff.
I guess, I guess, my thought is that, that this doesn't seem like, um, an issue with regard to us granting or not granting the CUP. This sounds to me like there's maybe some disgruntled neighbors. Right or wrong, right or wrong, maybe some code enforcement issues. But it, to me, it doesn't seem like it is an issue that should, um, prevent us from going either way, okay, going forward with, with the request, okay?
Commissioner Dever, any other questions, comments? No, okay. Commissioner Stevens, anything?
Um, yeah. This is a little heavy. The property of a leased property and the business is applying for business license, correct?
He, I, I think the applicant can answer that, so I, it, better on the ownership because he is a, I believe you are the son of the property owner.
Sure.
Okay, so you leased, you leased the property?
I leased the car wash portion of it.
Okay, so the property is owned. And I, I see here in your, your letter, so you're, you're leasing it basically from a tower. Okay, a real estate company for your lease. So some of these issues with the easement and what you can and can't do with the alley outside of a business license. I would think that that would be specified in your specific lease. Or in your lease renewal, as far as, you know, that whole section and the, the, um, Marion complaints based on, it's not really on the business part of it. I mean, as far as running the business, I'm just trying to clarify in my own head. So, in that same thing, and I understand you, you lost many due to COVID, not being able to work and, and we all understand that. Um, but it says for the, you're, you're under, you're under investigation by the state. You're a lot of money. What is that? It says it's still pending.
So from my knowledge, somebody leased that small truck before.
Okay.
They ran it, not a hundred percent what happened to them, but they were, ended up getting closed down. One of the techs left, they were trying to hire another tech, couldn't find one, they decided to just not deal with it anymore and they closed it out.
Okay. I'm sure you're basically taking over.
Um, yeah.
That was there.
All new.
Okay, now let's do it.
Yeah, I'm not trying to.
So this, the new lease then for the property? Right.
Okay, cause my next part of that was if, if that investigation would prove negative to the business, which obviously it did, uh, would the lease still be in effect and would we be having the compensation? So if, if that wasn't you, that was the previous.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
So you're good, okay.
Talk to them now, thank you.
All right, and, uh, Commissioner Dever? Bob?
No, I, everybody said it. I, I was hoping that somebody would get to the point where this is not, we're, we're apples and oranges here for a few minutes, so I think we're back on track.
Okay, I believe Vice Chair Graff kind of made that point, that what's happening outside of the circle is something that we have no control over and that for what we have in front of us, we can move forward with a vote. And that the code enforcement issue will be dealt with by code enforcement. And obviously, the, uh, investigation into the prior business has nothing to do with the current business and their attempt to get a, a, a business license.
Right, and I, and I, just so I can go on record as saying that I, I do think code enforcement issues are really important and I think neighbors need to be good neighbors, but there also needs to be some, um, education done by our staff as, to the people that are asking questions, um, easements and so forth, what's, what's happening, what's not happening. That's all very, very important, but not what we're talking about tonight. So thank you.
Uh, I, I respectfully disagree because.
Mary, Miriam, you're, you're not allowed to speak right now, so let the commission still finish its deliberation here. Um, so go ahead, Bob.
No, I, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, and I'll just dovetail on all of that by saying, yes, what's before us is a applicant's, um, uh, or an, an application for a conditional use permit, which would, um, eventually affect the, uh, approval or disapproval of a business license. So I think as Commissioner Vice, Vice Chair Graff said, um, and everyone else has said, we will do our part and let the city code enforcement look into these issues and then they'll work directly with the owner of La Mita Plaza, which is Mary. Okay, so with that being said, I am going to, uh, close the public hearing finally for the last time. And if there's no more questions, I'd like to get a motion on the, uh, request for a conditional use permit number three twenty-two.
I'm, I'm making a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, which will be.
And do I have to read it?
Yes.
You said. And staff provided it here, no. Um, I lost my first page, excuse me. See, you messed the order. Okay. Condition, I move on for approval of conditional use permit number three twenty-two for eighteen hundred La Mita Boulevard for the, to allow a smog shop to operate in existing one thousand square foot service bay at eighteen hundred La Mita Boulevard in the MC light manufacturing commercial block.
Thank, that's your motion? For a second for that motion?
Well, seconded.
Okay, so we have a second from Commissioner Dever. If there's no other comments or questions, I would like to just add the sentence to the motion that says, uh, that the approval of conditional use permit three twenty-two rests on the outcome of the investigation by code enforcement and the follow-up by Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, by, uh, playing, uh, Laura McMoran's, uh, investigation into some of the concerns from the.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. That is not, uh, that is, okay, approval of this is not conditioned upon that, that, uh, uh, code enforcement issue or anything, uh, having to do with Miriam, this is, uh. Okay. I would draw, I would draw that if you can strike it, then just strike that. I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna add that in, okay? So it's back to my. Okay, so there's original motion and a second on this, okay?
Yeah, that's, that's a separate, okay.
Should I handle it separate? Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. Um, Madam Kirk, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, um, Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
We're noting the absence this evening of, um, Commissioner Santos, who by the way, did, I just remembered, he did let me know he'd be missing this meeting, so I apologize for that. Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Uh, yes.
All right, that's five zero approved with one absent. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have item number, uh, five under scheduled matters. Business communications regarding our city council actions. I don't know if we have any from anybody, Laura, anybody?
Mayor.
Well, I know we have the new mayor, so yes, Barry Wade is now the new mayor sworn in.
We do have, uh, next Tuesday, December twentieth at four P M, a discussion, the both planning commission and city council. It's not a decision-making meeting, but a discussion on the final update for the housing element. So that's at four P M, right before the six P M council meeting, which will have, uh, the second reading of the building code update as referenced by LA County's adoption of the building code and the zoning tax amendment for the signage at the higher development type of zone. Um, those are the main two items over there.
You know, upstairs there?
It will not, I, I believe it will be in the chambers, but, uh, look for further direction, Linda, unless you know?
Linda will let us know. Linda, you'll let us know where that joint meeting is gonna take place?
I'm sorry, I had my mic off. Um, it, it will be upstairs.
Up here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, and that's, uh, again, joint, uh, meeting between city council and planning commission on December twentieth at four P M. Stairs in the assembly room, yeah, okay. It'll be a crowded house.
And then of note, the January planning commission meeting as well, no, um, it was canceled due to no application complete.
Okay.
Yeah. We have, right? The, the not complete application.
Okay. Okay, uh, item number six, project status updates. Do we have anything? From any of the previous projects that we've talked about? Any updates on anything?
Oh, well, I gave, um, I did review the plans for plan shift only for the mixed-use developments south of Kewanas. They are, you know, they're going to be submitted moment, momentarily to building and safety.
Okay.
So that's moving forward on course.
How are our restaurants coming along? You wanna cross the street?
I'm from them.
Which, which restaurants? All of them. Like, are they all on track and scheduled open when they were originally designed?
I, some, um, the bakery is very aggressively moving forward, um, and, um, we're just fine tuning and stuff. They have a design change on Narbonne's side and we're fine tuning some stuff that, you know, this is all happening simultaneously, right? Like, they have a revision, we have, uh, just aesthetic issues. Across the street, we're talking with, uh, about the facade and how that, um, meets our D C guidelines. So, some are slower than, you know, our appetites are for.
Okay, um, other matters, item number seven, staff announcements or anything other than what?
The council meeting in January. Oh, my, how could I forget the most exciting news? We have accepted offers from, two applicants have accepted offers from us for the assistant planner and the planning interim position.
Oh, who's gonna ask that?
We are looking at start date in early January.
Okay, great, great.
Very exciting.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, next item number eight, planning commissioner items. Uh, we'll start with Vice Chair Graff.
Uh, yeah, a couple of items. Uh, like I said, I was gonna ask a question about that. Um, first is, uh, the city staff should really be commended about the Christmas right in ceremony. It was just fantastic, even in the rain. I mean, it rained the whole time and everybody had a great time. So staff should be commended on that. Second item is, uh, the staff of the museum, the railroad museum should be commended, uh, on the Christmas party from yesterday. My wife and I arrived there to volunteer at about ten o'clock in the morning. As we walked in, the sky opened up and it just blasted. It rained, it blew, they had a hard time getting the tents up and everything, but come eleven o'clock, it was gone. And it was very successful, so they need to be commended on that. And the, the city is, this, it's just great how the city, um, is support, has been supporting these items. Um, the other thing, like I said, was the, the personnel issue. I have read, I have gotten, personally gotten three complaints from business owners or future business owners on the inability to get anything moving in our planning department. Because we all know, and given them excuses, it, it, the, the thing is, is there's so much going on and you had one person doing all of it. And it's been very difficult because we haven't had another personnel, we haven't had U N voice brand. And now that we have that and everything, I'm hopeful. And I've been telling them and explaining to them the situation. Cause things just get pushed off and other things have to take more precedence and this and that. And I tried to explain that and I think they understand it, that they're going to be very excited now that we've come.
I will say, yeah, we will, um, give them a little bit of time to, you know, get used to the waters, but we do expect to see some increase in, in, uh, you know, workload offset.
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Dever?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Steinbach, anything? Bob?
No.
Come back to the bottom of the second. Commissioner, do you?
No, just, uh, again, the staff has been fantastic through all the stuff that's happening and. Yeah, we're good.
Double back. Commissioner Steinbach, anything from you?
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. You know, I, I had to upload this software for Zoom before the meeting tonight and I'm having a devil of a time dealing with it. Um, anyway, that being said, I don't, I don't have anything else this time.
All right. And, uh, I only have two things. One is I'm sorry I missed the pre-lighting. It's just that for the first time in three months, I. Wasn't under like eighteen hour days for work or, uh, the budget. So we finally got away for the weekend and I'm sorry I missed the pre-lighting because I normally don't miss it. But it does look nice at night. So I will tell you that it looks good. Um. And then the other thing is I just shot a couple of emails over to, uh. City manager Ryan about some issues out in the streets with regards to graffiti and a couple of other items. Uh. The taco shop is back again by. Autozone. So I just shot that email over and a picture, um, that was there. Saturday and Sunday night and whole regalia.
I saw it was there last night.
Um, so just so that you know, and, uh. I do know that things are moving on all the restaurant fronts, but I do see the physical activity. And it's good to see that the karate shop finally got their front window and that whole. facade, facade replaced, um, so that is. Something off of the, uh, drawing board, although I'm. Sure, the Lego now are looking at the empty. Businesses across the street where. The fish and taco place moved around the corner and the corner unit is still empty. So hopefully. Somebody will find them. Maybe you want to get in there. But that's only two things right there.
Can you interrupt for just a second? I got a question on that. You know, the, those facilities there, you know, practically, you know, I know that, uh. I know George Kivens talked to him all the time. He had been hopeful on different occasions that he was. There really is no parking anywhere. Absolutely nowhere. So what kind of, just, just a question, what kind of business can go in there that could survive? Without any parking?
Huh? There's no parking behind it.
There's no parking.
They took it out?
It's an alley. No, there's no, there's never been any parking.
And then there's that, uh, other building.
There's the one across the street, uh, but most of that. That's all by that little park yet, that little park yet. That's private.
That's private.
So, and I know that, I know they've talked, I know George tried to talk to, uh. The floor covering plays and army and go to try to kind of deal with them at different times and this stuff. And, but I mean, it, what type of business could, could survive in, in an environment like that?
Well, I, I, I love to cross fingers and toes and hope for good use. We do have, um, I did speak to a hair salon. That's gonna go into the corner.
Where the water place was before.
Yeah, it's a hydro where it used to be the print shop and a, um. I want to make sure I characterize as well, but a, um, a personal products new retail shop. Who is that an environmental? Edge is gonna take half of the state that Baha had and her. She's a, she's a local Lomita restaurant, a restaurant resident. You got me thinking about food. She's, she's a local resident. Who wants to see us refill containers. With, you know, kind of a little bit more like the Whole Foods bin idea. Um, instead of always just buying disposable containers. So you would go to her for products that are leaving a lot of the footprint. For personal care. So those two spaces actually, two out of, a good portion of that building looks like it's gonna have tenants. Parking, yes, was one of the reasons Baha moved because he had people bringing in heavy things that needed repair. And they had to be close to the site in order to carry their stuff. Hopefully these others people can, you know, walk a little ways. Especially if you have an environmental edge. Maybe people will be like more client or clientele will walk more. Hmm. And then I can add to, um, I didn't think it was gonna be applicable, but tonight, oh, it's like she just left. But we are also next Tuesday taking a city council and making that agenda, um, and a professional services agreement. With a company for augmented code enforcement services. Also, more code enforcement.
To augment the one that we have?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's really tough.
That's actually a very good point back under, uh. Staff announcement.
Yeah, that, that would be wonderful.
I'm thinking, I could wonder, I'm younger.
Now, you know, and every day you see a new graffiti. Every day and it's the place up on, uh, what is it? Oak? It's an oak, the one we were just talking about.
Oh, on Peach and.
Peach and.
Cypress.
Cypress.
Yeah.
That old building has been around.
Nothing.
Yeah.
Architectural.
Been referred, ever kind of a thing.
The graffiti gets worse. What happened there, Linda?
Hi. We. I know. It seems we've lost connection with. With the, um, assembly room upstairs.
Yeah, they're all froze in one position.
Right. In mid-sentence, uh.
Yeah.
Yes. So. Nope. Okay. They're probably going to log back on. Hi.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes. Okay, um. Can I get a motion to? Well, there was only one item left and that's who would like to attend the January seventeenth city council meeting. So that's it. Thank you. Okay, this meeting. Has been adjourned at seven oh nine P M. Thank you all.
Okay. Thanks, Linda.
Bye-bye. Bye, Bob.
Bye.
Wodenski.